Okay, we're here with Brian Dawson. He's a candidate for Precinct Two Commissioner. And I'm John Wertz. With me are Larry Rogers, James Byers, Dennis and Pat Tibbs. And we're expecting shortly Dell Fessington and Maureen Paul. So as we just discussed, Brian, we'll go ahead and start with your five minute, up to five minute open.
John, thank you. Thank y'all for the opportunity to be here. I am Brian Dawson, just for the camera, running for Commissioner of Precinct Two. And I want to take a few minutes just to say, I'm running for Commissioner for a couple of reasons, but the biggest reason, what sums it up, is I'm running because we need a change in culture on Commissioners' Court. And some of y'all have probably heard me say it that way a few times, but we've got to change the culture of how Commissioners' Court is operated. One of the underlying premises in that is that right now, they believe we have a revenue problem. And if you look at how they operate, they're continually looking for opportunities to increase revenue, find alternative revenue streams. It's all focused on revenue. I believe, however, we have a spending problem, that the revenue is there, that our growth, the revenue's there. It's not a revenue problem, it is clearly a spending problem. But I'm also running, I believe we need a change in culture because we have, Commissioners' Court has perpetually hidden behind what I believe to be hidden tax increases on the people of Montgomery County. Year over year, you hear them come out after the budget hearings and say, either we lowered your tax rate, or, you know, we kept your tax rate the same. Well, that's great and all, but the problem, the fact of the matter is, taxes have gone up. They have failed to do their job. They've perpetually increased taxes. When a homeowner or a property owner pays more this year than they did last year, to mean that is a tax increase? So, go ahead, I'll get it.
Should be open.
Come on in. This night? But those hidden tax increases have got to stop. We cannot continue to operate that way. We cannot continue, we are not going to continue to experience the growth and the prosperity that Montgomery County currently experiences if we continue to hide behind those hidden tax increases. So, those are two big things to me. I don't want to sit here and monopolize the time with an opening, I'd rather get to questions. So, if it's alright, I'll just start answering questions.
Okay. Alright. Sort of addressing the elephant in the room.
Yeah.
You were at one time the President of the Texas Conservant Tea Party Coalition, if I got all that correctly. Also known as an amendment to Commissioners' Court by Chairman Duane Hamm, as well as a fake Tea Party. And as well, I believe you were a campaign manager for Craig Doyle. To this day, the fake Tea Parties filing to the Texas Ethics Commission are still in disarray, to my knowledge. As President Harry Truman said years ago, the buck stops here with you. In two minutes, per last, please tell us all about how you became the President of the fake Tea Party, and why we should believe you're not a Trojan Horse candidate for Judge Doyle. And if one of my team wants to ask you about it further, they're certainly welcome to.
Right. Well, a couple of things. So let's start with the how. So, everybody knows that I volunteered on Craig Doyle's campaign in 2014 as his campaign manager. We, I want to say somewhere around October of 2013, you know, he asked me to volunteer, had looked at the candidates and felt that that's who I wanted to support for that race. You know, just like everyone else, we have decisions to make when it comes time to go into the election booth. He offered to make me as campaign manager, I accepted, and I did a lot of work for him. I mean, we, from scheduling his poll workers, to block walking, to all of the get out the vote campaigns, you know, organizing, getting signs up, that was certainly on me, all the way through the runoff election, which was in May. It wasn't until after that, that I was asked to be involved in TCTVC. I want to say it was June-July, okay? And that was mainly because there was a special election runoff going on at that time.
Was it 2014, June-July?
That would have been, yes, 2014, June-July. So we had the March primary, we had a special election in May, I think it was May 5th for SD4, if that, something along those lines. We had the runoff, primary runoff at the end of May. And then in August, we had the Senate District runoff. Somewhere in that June-July timeframe, Duane came to me and asked me to be involved to help support Senator Creighton, and now Senator Creighton, a few other things. And then I was involved through the November election where we worked with, you know, interviewed Lone Star College and things of that nature. John, so that was the how.
Okay.
And what was the second part of your question? I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
Well, you want to continue that, Larry, or maybe I can just forego one of these questions?
Well, that's right. How was that, how am I not a Trojan Horse? Look, any of you that have known me, and most of y'all have known me for a while, I'm no one's, you know, never been known as anyone's lackey or anyone's whipping boy, or however you want to, however you want to put it. I've always been, I believe, to be known to stand on my own two feet and make my own decisions. I don't succumb to people's pressure, I don't succumb to people's influence. I made, I own the fact that I supported Craig in 2014 because I thought it was the best choice at the time. You know, I challenge anyone that ever, that has never gotten it wrong with a candidate in, you know, in an election. But to the same token, I've also disagreed with him publicly and very openly, when I have disagreed with him since he's been county judge. And I've let him know that, and it's been, not just letting him know that, but it's been in The Courier and it's been in other places. So, that's the proof in the pudding, John, and that's what I can point to to say that, you know, if I disagree, I'll disagree.
Okay. Do you have a follow-on to that, or?
Okay. One of our questions on the questionnaire, what are the three largest challenges currently facing the position of office and your roadmap to address them? My question, and the first one was public trust. And you answered generally speaking, but nothing specific. What happened to the public trust?
I think it was taken advantage of. I think it, how? Well, I mean, we see it now. I mean, two weeks, three weeks ago now, whatever it was, I felt compelled to ask for Commissioner Riley's resignation because he was doing something that his office previously had terminated someone for. It's very simple things, that there's just a complete disregard, not just for the public, but now for the law. We've seen questionable actions where there's been a disregard for right and wrong, and, you know, what was right, what was wrong. But now we've seen it, you know, expand to a disregard for what is even legal, and for what, and to turn around and say that, I'm going to do it again. That's the most, that's the most recent. So, to have a bond in May 5th, 2015, fail as famously as that bond failed, and to turn, and then to turn around and what, a few weeks later defiantly, you know, announce that we will build this no matter what? How does that not undermine the public trust? Because their voice is basically being, he said, your voice does not matter to me.
Is there any other election you'd like to get?
People listening may not know about, you'd mentioned Craig Doyle dismissing somebody. If you wouldn't mind explaining what that was about.
Well, there was, it's been, you know, reported in The Courier and other places that there was an employee back when Commissioner Riley was Operations Manager and Judge Doyle was the Commissioner at the time, that was caught using public property for campaign use, and was terminated. And in my opinion, in my opinion, and I know that Commissioner Riley took exception with, to me, with what I said about who terminated her, but in my opinion, that precedence was set very clearly, that if you do this, and that is use public property for either campaign or personal use, you will be terminated. And what he effectively said is, no, those set of rules do not apply to me. And so, he's clearly set the standard that there is a different set of rules for elected officials and employees, and which begs the question, does he, does he think there's a separate set of rules for citizens? So, James, is that, can I give you the context you're looking for?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, was there any other election that's?
Well, yes, but...
I'd like to know what you think of the unique issues for Precinct Two. Not county-wise, but just Precinct Two.
Well, Precinct Two, the great thing about Precinct Two is it's probably the most diverse precinct, in my opinion, in the county. And I mean, economically diverse, geographically diverse, it's, you've got all these pockets. It's not one community. You've got multiple communities that all have their very unique identity and their very unique traits and ideas, and what they want their community to be. From, you know, Magnolia all the way over to Shenandoah River Plantation and Wood Forest and so on. One of the biggest challenges unique is getting those different entities to work together, because there are, there is some overlap. Their mobility is one of the biggest issues that Precinct Two faces, because it's a hodgepodge currently of activity with no clear strategic plan. So, that's probably the biggest. You've got all these different communities that need to be connected, you need, you've got City of Conroe, you've got City of Montgomery, City of Magnolia, City of Shenandoah and the Woodless Township, all as municipal, local government entities that the county needs to cooperate and work with to make sure the mobility needs are met. And we can't do that by shooting from the hip on mobility planning. We've got to be more strategic and more thorough in our planning. So, that's one. Obviously, we know drainage is becoming a bigger one. It's unfortunate that the push for drainage studies and to get more information and to find a solution to the troubles that the precincts find, has been falling on other people. Thankfully that we've had, thankfully we've had other people step up to take on that issue, but unfortunately, we haven't seen much out of the current Commissioner.
Thank you.
You mentioned about the fiscal accountability, and of course, you know, we all agree with that. The question I'd have would be, which programs would you restrict or cut based on the fact that there would be no new revenue? Well, it's going to be more revenues as people move in.
Right.
But revenue based on appraisal increases, let's say miraculously that doesn't happen, and of course, the tax rate or certain doubt will go up.
Your lifting of your ears.
Well, unless we do legislation to prohibit it. But the point is, you know, if there's going to be less money or no money for new needs, like the Sheriff's Department, we know there's going to be increased needs there. So where would you cut?
Well, so where I would say, one of the bigger, bigger things, when I talked about the culture, changing the culture of Commissioners' Court, it comes back to prioritizing the role of county government, okay? County government, as far as Commissioners' Court is concerned, is constitutional. That's why we're all in 254 counties and we're all the same, because the Texas Constitution clearly says four Commissioners and a county judge to run the business of the county.
Sure.
In short, paraphrasing. But, you know, if we, if we reprioritize how we spend our money, we could, and I'm getting to the, to the country.
You said, you were saying to prioritize and that the bond, they'd be cut off. What would be your top priority?
Well, it's very clear, there's two. It's law enforcement and infrastructure.
Okay.
And I don't, I hate to answer that question that way, because it's, I'm not saying one is any more important than the other, because I think they're, they're very closely tied together. But if you look at our, you sit through our budget process, it's very disappointing that you get to the end, and that's when they undertake law enforcement. After they've grown government, after they've grown the bureaucracy that is the county government, then we're going to appeal to the needs.
Well, you know why.
Well, yeah.
They will use the money they have, the way they want to spend it, and say, oh, we don't have enough money, but this is law enforcement.
This is law enforcement, we need to raise it.
It's a game, they think people are too stupid to understand.
And I reject that.
It's an insult.
I reject that, because where I come from, in the business world, which is what I think we need, that approach, we need more of that approach. We need, government's not the solution. I know there's, you know, we've heard the argument that, you know, experience is needed. We heard that, you know, and we see what that got us. We need to bring the approach from the business world in here, because where I come from, we budget based on need. You know, not what we want, not what we want to do, and then we fill in what we need. We start with the needs first.
Yeah, how much is left?
Four seconds.
Okay. Excellent.
One of the recent controversies has been with what I'll call organizational structure in Commissioners' Court and county offices. Maybe this is an incorrect way of stating it, but I'll state it as this, all department heads seem to report to Craig Doyle only. Please give your views on that. What is the, what is the going forward position on that? What can be done from Commissioner level?
I came out eight or nine months ago and clearly stated that it was time to re, to put that back to the court, to reallocate those responsibilities back to the court and take it away from the county judge. I forget when that letter to the editor was in the paper, but I, John, I know I've sent you a copy of it. I can, Dale, I can send it to you then to get the exact, but I want to say it was around March or April. So I still believe it. We've got to change the culture. We've got to change who sits there, and right now, it only takes one. And with one change, one vote, one change, we can, we can re-proportion that authority back to where it should be.
Okay. Well, let me follow on a little bit.
Absolutely.
Minute nineteen.
Minute nineteen. Because of that, at least from the layman's perspective, it appears that there's a lack of visibility by the Commissioners of what's going on in the departments. What proactively can a Commissioner do, and under the current situation, to become more aware and so forth?
Well, and I think that touches on what, and I'm going to talk real fast. I think that touches on one of the things that I think we don't see happening collectively across the, even with the judge, even though they have that, he has technically that authority, and that is, members of Commissioners' Court that will immerse themselves in the business of Montgomery County, and know what's going on in those departments. How are you going to work with those department heads and lead and be the leader that we elect them to be, if you don't know what's going on? And you've got to immerse yourself in those departments, not to, you know, not to be, you know, the hovering dad, or helicopter parry, or whatever it's called, but to understand so that you can be part of that decision-making process when they come to court, and when they ask you to make decisions on behalf of that department.
Okay, or what I always heard Craig says, management by walking around.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, Dennis?
A little more about spending, you know, we, Montgomery County is in the bottom half of the size curve, but they're in the top half of the spending curve. And across the board, it just seems like they're not interested in the conservative money. And one of those areas is salary. You know, we literally pay in Montgomery County to all our elected officials as much as water, grounds and liberty combined. We've got the high, some of the highest salaries in the state. And the fact that they seem disinterested in keeping salaries proportional also implies that they're not too interested in keeping the other things in proportion. So what would you do about salaries? What do you think needs to be done? I mean, Commissioners are making pretty good salary right now, so that's one place to start.
Well, that's, you're absolutely right, that's one place to start. I have said I'm not in favor of cutting the Commissioner's salary. I intend to go and earn every, every dollar that they make, but I don't think they, they need a raise, I don't think they deserve a raise, I don't think we're in a position to give elected officials a raise. I think that's one start, is, and that, that goes to the problem with the budget process is, you know, we've got to freeze these elected official salaries, period. There's just, there's no reason for it, there's no call for it, to continue to lump them in with the rest of the county when they, when they want to give these raises. First of all, Commissioners' Court has hidden behind the, what they call a COLA, which is not a COLA, cost of living adjustment. They've done that to appeal, to try and sell it, in my opinion, to Joe Public. But it, when you get the perpetual 3% over and over, you end up with a problem we've got. It goes back to what Dale touched on a second ago, and that's management. They just, they failed to manage it appropriately. Go ahead.
Well, and Treasurers and Auditors and Lawyers and DA, they're all as disproportionate as the Commissioner's salary compared to the other counties around. Those other three counties are pretty small counties.
Right.
But there's no way we should be paying more than those combined pay, and no way we should be paying close to what Harris County and Tarrant County pay.
Basically, without salary cuts, parity is a long way off in the future.
Yeah.
Parity is. I mean, it is, but I think it's one of those things that, you know, we have to look at. I think we've got to figure out how to better manage it moving forward. That's, that's the, sorry.
And another thing that you could say is, if we're the highest paying job in the state, you're not likely to get candidates who are there to serve the public. You're getting candidates who are there to make a money.
And that's why we need to make sure that they do, because our Commissioners do have a heck of a job. We do. I mean, we, we're at what, 84% unincorporated, and I'm not saying that that dismisses your concerns, I'm saying that we need to hold them accountable. And it's one of the things that I've talked about, is we need elected officials that are willing to be held accountable to a higher standard. And that, and then, part of that is work ethic.
Okay, thanks.
It's said that Montgomery County is the fastest growing county in the country.
Seventh.
Because of, one of the fastest, because of the business climate, quality of life. You agree with that? If so, why do we need or even offer any tax abatements whatsoever?
Why do we? And I, why do we, or why should we, or both?
Both.
I think we do, because I think there is a, somewhat of a misguided idea of what it's going to take for these businesses to get here. I think that...
One more word.
Well, I think they think it's required. I think, I don't think they put enough pressure back on the businesses. I think, you know, if a business walks into Montgomery County and says, we're going to leave, or we're not coming here if we don't get this, I don't think there's any more investigation to be done in that. Because if you look at it, and you look at what, you know, this business is sitting here, and they've got, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars invested in equipment and real estate and employees, and they want to do a small addition right there, does it make logical sense that they're going to move those employees, you know, across Houston because of a four-year abatement? Highly unlikely, but they get the abatement nonetheless, you know?
So what would you do as a Commissioner, as a stop to that?
I think that we need, I think, if you look at when those abatements come to Commissioners' Court, they defer everything back to the policy. If it met the minimum requirements of our, of the county policy that they've got, they pass it.
So obviously...
And I think we should, I think we should look, I think we should look deeper into it to see if it's, A, is it really necessary to keep those or bring those jobs here, but I also think we need to look at what jobs we're bringing here, and is the math adding up? Because one of the things, I read through the policy again, in answering your question, there are certain requirements in there. Well then, on what, and I forget, and I could not find it, I went back to one of the agendas where they gave an abatement, and if you do the math on what they tell you, on the revenue, not the revenue, I'm sorry, the salary, the total salary dollars in the positions, it doesn't add up, it adds up to minimum wage jobs. Which are not, which are not enough to meet the requirements of the policy.
So would you take a leadership position on...
I think we need someone, I think, I think we need, I think we need to take a leadership position on someone to be, to scrutinize those more often, to scrutinize, scrutinize those more thoroughly, and make sure that it's something that wholly benefits the county, and that we wouldn't benefit from without it.
Okay, you said "we," but I'm saying you.
We.
You take it, okay.
Yeah, I said "we," and "we" is in the county would benefit, I mean, because the county, you know, that's, when I say "we," that's what I mean. But yes, take a leadership role in scrutinizing that, and making sure that it's something that's right for the county.
Okay. Larry?
Okay, in questionnaire, budget, we hope to limit budget increases to a factor based on population growth and inflation, and explain. And your answer was that we have grown at a pace for exceeding anyway.
Yeah.
And then during the 85th legislative session, I went to Austin on multiple occasions advocating on behalf of appraisal reform spending caps such as this. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Absolutely. So, you know, SB2 was probably the most popular, there were a lot of bills that came through the House and the Senate, through the legislature this year, attempting to address appraisal reform, spending caps and things of that nature. One of the ones that I jumped on was, because it had local push from Senator Creighton, was SB2. I know, you know, not everybody thinks it was perfect or anything, but it was one of the ones I thought had the best chance to push, because I do think, you know, the legislature has worked to limit their, their spending increases, and while we've seen local government, not just counties, but all municipal local governments explode because of the lack of appraisal reform. So I think we need both. We need there's, we need the appraisal cap lowered, and we need to have a spending cap. You know, unfortunately, I am the only one in this race that believes that. I mean, everyone else has lobbied, you know, both of my other opponents have lobbied against this, you know, on both, you know, on multiple occasions. We've got to address this issue, because if we don't, we're going to, we're going to end up in Montgomery County at least taxing our residents out of their homes and out of the county.
So your opponents, just to be clear, have argued against appraisal cap and spending caps?
Absolutely.
Both of them?
So, one is, one has signed a resolution against it, and the other one was in Austin lobbying against it in the last legislation.
I'd like to return to your specific area, Precinct Two and County.
Absolutely.
And would you give us some more information about how you will address the needs of that wide range of people you will be representing?
The biggest thing is to get to know the, I mentioned, what, four different municipalities than five different, I think, I don't want to miss one, because that's embarrassing to videotape, but...
Well, they have very different outlooks, I think.
They do, but it requires relationships. I come from a sales background, I worked for a manufacturer of sheet piling, but, you know, I work with the distributors and customers, contrary, it relates, my point is relationships. And if you don't have, it's hard to work with people, in my opinion, if you don't have some basis of a relationship with them. That doesn't mean you have to always agree, that doesn't mean you're always going to get along and, you know, be sing kumbaya as you walk down the street, but it does mean that you have a foundation for which to work with, work together. It's unfortunate that our current Commissioner, there are elected officials in Precinct Two that have gone 12, 18 months in office and never meeting the Commissioner, when he, the Commissioner in Montgomery County has such responsibility for the things, you know, within the county. How can you expect to have a relationship and address those issues if you can't take that leadership role and develop those, because the county should, because there are so many, the county should be the pinnacle that has those relationships, so when necessary, bring those entities together to work together. One of the things that I'm adamant about is, January 1st, 2019, I was wondering, one of the first things I'm going to start working on, is a precinct mobility plan. I've talked about it since I announced on July 6th, that we've got to have a comprehensive mobility plan that prioritizes the projects that need to be built out for Precinct Two. There's talk of projects, and they don't address the issue, the fundamental issues of getting people where they need, from where they need to be to where they need to go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we're about there for three.
We have two opponents, you mentioned the county judge that you asked for resignation. I guess, for anyone watching this, what would be the reason they vote for you instead of Charlie Riley? Whatever issues he has, he's a known factor. You would be a total unknown, in other words, people hear what you would say, but they have no idea what you'd actually do to get in.
Right.
So my question is, how would you convince anyone to vote for you instead of Charlie Riley or Greg Parker?
Well, it's a good question. I mean, and it's a chance that you always take when you have a non-incumbent or someone non-office holder running for office. You know, and there's no doubt over time, you've seen a hit or miss with that, the way that goes. What I would point to is, this isn't the first time I've run. Go back and look at the things I've said, and the things I've fought for, and the things that I believe in, and look at the consistency in that message.
Has Charlie Riley done anything so terrible that he would need to be replaced?
What's that?
Has Charlie Riley been incumbent?
I believe so.
Will you explain?
Absolutely. Well, I think that it's 2017, we're fixing to be 2018, and we're still talking about the same issues that we were talking about in 2014. Taxes skyrocketing are still an issue, mobility is still an issue, and one of the things that we were told in 2014 is, elect me because I've got the experience to get this stuff done. Elect me because I've worked with tech staff for the last 12 years, and I'm going to have the best chance of working with them to get things moving. But then turn around to a couple of weeks ago, and he's referencing bond projects, and his excuse is for them not being... But then turn around to a couple of weeks ago and he's referencing bond projects and his excuse is for them not being, well, TechStop's holding it up. You told us three years ago that you had the best chance of working with TechStop. So where, where, where is the, the output that we told, we were told we would get in that election?
So how would you do things differently or better in that particular issue?
Well, I think, I think you've got to take it, it goes back to leadership. We've, we've talked about that in, in several different, you know, caveats and, of questions. But taking a leadership on those roles, too many people have told me as I knock on doors and meet with people that they have reached out to the Commissioner's office and have been told, that's not my responsibility. That's not the, the role of this office. That's not what we do. You need to call someone else. Where's the leadership, James? That we need, the, the big thing is take, take a leadership role, take responsibility for what is going on within the precinct and, and be determined to get it done. Yes, maybe it is a state road. I personally called and was told that. Because there was a safe, what I perceived to be a safety issue at the beginning of, at entrance of, of my neighborhood. I would, and I was told, not my responsibility. You need to call TechStop.
So did you call TechStop and it was or was not?
Well, it was, it was a signal. No, it could have been done through the county. It could have been done through the county because it was, it had to go through plat review. And there could have been, but my point is with leadership, had I been the commissioner and I got that phone call?
Right.
And explained what I explained to him, I would have said, you know what, let me call TechStop. Let me call them right now and I'll get back with you. Because that's unacceptable in my, in, in, in this precinct.
Okay. Okay.
Speed round.
Back to January first, two thousand nineteen. Your first day in office, day one. You've already mentioned mobility plan. What other things are going to be there on day one?
Well.
And with respect to the mobility plan, if you would all, go a little bit further in, say, two forty-nine. What, what are your thoughts and what can be done given the current situation?
Um, that's a lot in that one, Dale. So day one, I, I think it would be, I'd be remiss to not say, look at what bond projects and start evaluating where all the projects are, what status they are and, and where they're at. What, what level of completion we're at and what, what's, if there are some being held up, which there currently are, what, what's it going to take to get those held up? This community invested too much blood, sweat and tears into, into that, into those two bonds that led to the November fifteen bond for those projects to still be lingering out there. You know, people, people, there was a lot that went into that. This community is still paying for the, you know, for the ramifications of, of what, of what happened. And we need to, we need to get those. So that's, that would be the, my answer to that. With regards to two forty-nine, unfortunately, we see that this, the current court is, is dead set on cramming seventy-three million dollars of debt down, down the throat of, of the taxpayers in Montgomery County. I've been adamant and outspoken that if, if they're this adamant that it is such a priority, then they need to send it to the voters. Because I just, I don't believe that you should put that much debt, levy that much debt against the county. And I know they argue that it's not the county and that, and that's fine. They certainly can take that position. But I don't think you should do that without sending it to the voters first. So if, if they believe it is such a priority, they need to put it on the ballot and go make the case. I, I don't think they will. Unfortunately, as long as they continue to have three votes, they're going to continue to ram it down the throats of, of, of the people of Montgomery County. What I don't think we should do though, what I don't think is, I don't, I go back to what I led with in my opening statement. We do not have a revenue problem. I, we should, we should have, two years ago, whenever it was, gone to TechStop and said, no, Montgomery County rejects the idea of building a toll road. Build it with state money. I brought this for a reason. The amount of money that Montgomery County gets in state and federal funding, it would repulse everyone in this room. We, we do a poor job of bringing our tax dollars back to Montgomery County. Whereas Grimes County, you keep bringing up Grimes County, and they're getting a heck of a deal on their, on their commissioners because they fought it unifiedly and they're getting three hundred and fifty something million dollars in state funding. I think it's three fifty-eight.
Was it pre-toll road or is it currently toll road?
That, that's for, that's just for two forty-nine and it's not going to be told. They said, we don't want it told and they pony it up. I got one opponent that wants to toll it, the other one wants to raise the gas tax to pay for it. We do not need to raise taxes. I don't care in what form. We need to do a better job of bringing our tax dollars back to this county. I know I'm going over, but I, I want to hammer on this point just a little bit. Do y'all, does anybody know how much on average we, we generate? Montgomery County generates in, in state, just state gas tax annually? Okay, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you the numbers. Five hundred and two thousand registered vehicles in Montgomery County. Okay? Now, the comptroller's office, I believe, and it is a little bit of dated data, say that fast. But they, they, they estimate between eight and fourteen dollars per month per registered vehicle is generated in, in state gas tax. Okay? So I took a, wait for it, conservative position and estimated, and estimated ten dollars a month per vehicle. So if you take ten dollars a month per vehicle, that's a hundred and twenty dollars a year times five hundred and two thousand registered vehicles. You're somewhere in the sixty-two to sixty-three million dollars a year in state money that goes to the state.
Gas tax money.
Gas tax money. This is a four-year plan, two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty. Sixty-two million times four is just under a quarter of a billion dollars. And, and we're, we're not even getting, I'm not naive to believe that we're, we're going to get every one of those dollars.
Well, that was my question. Any idea how much of that we're getting back?
I'm glad you asked that, James. I, I actually, I have two spreadsheets here running the numbers. State money, Montgomery County. There's, there's a trick though that you have to, that you, I say a trick, there's something you have to make. So three hundred million dollars. But what you have to look in there and, and notice is that which one of these roads are toll roads? Which one of these roads were sponsored? Because what you have to see is there are sponsors. So City of Conroe, City of Shenandoah, that's, while that's technically coming to Montgomery County, that's not the entity of Montgomery County going out and pursuing those dollars.
So any idea how much the county?
I would have to, uh, let me see, I think this one tells me. Yeah, it's, no, it, it, I've got it all. I'd have to, I'd have to sort it on my spreadsheet. I can send it to you.
Okay.
They have to share it with you.
Yeah.
But my, my point is, my point in hammering on that is, is we need someone that understands the ramifications of, of this and is committed to bringing our tax dollars back to Montgomery County. That, I want to remind you, that was just state gas tax. That was, that didn't even account for the federal gas tax that we also pay. And that's assuming gasoline, not diesel. So, you know, those are a few qualifications, but it's, because of the way gas tax is paid, it's, it, there's no definitive way. So that's why I like telling people how I estimated that out, so.
Let's talk a little bit about the day-to-day operation of the precinct.
Absolutely.
You know, it's my understanding that, that, that golf cart tram that was in the movies over the weekend, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Belongs to the precinct? And that we've got something like ten or twelve dump trucks that belong to the precinct. Half of them don't run. So, uh, do we need that many trucks? Should they be fixed and sold? Should they be scrapped out? Does each precinct duplicate the equipment or is, or is there or should there be some sort of a sharing agreement? So everybody doesn't have to have a grade all or what would you plan to do there about equipment inventory?
Well, I, I think that absolutely we need to take an, we, you, I come from the business world and we've, we've got to take that type of approach where you go in and you assess your assets. Because I don't care if it's not running or not, if it's sitting there, it's costing taxpayers money. It is an asset on the books. If it's an asset on the books, it's costing money whether it's seen or not. So you immediately start looking at, is this, do we need it? Can we fix it and sell it or do we need to scrap it? And then we work our fishes. Now, that's the only way you're going to improve efficiencies. And I'm talking really fast because I want to get through all of it. But then to your, I think you touched on a big thing about do the, do the different precincts duplicate equipment? Some do and, and some do and some don't. The reason is they have different assets. If you look at precinct three by comparison, have a lot of concrete roads, so they don't have the asphalt equipment that, that precinct four does. Precinct two tends to sub it all out. You know, they all kind of do their own thing. What I would like to see and what I would like to, what I would consider is trying to, I mean, we're talking about pieces of equipment that are fifty, eighty, hundred, hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you know, a piece. What's the efficiency we're getting out of that equipment? And is there, is there a way to, to share that equipment to, to get more efficiency out of it, to get more use out of it? So that we're not investing in all this equipment that's sitting there and not being used and gets weathered? Because anybody that's been around equipment knows that if it's sitting and not being used, it's weathering. And if it's weathering, it's aging, in, in my opinion, disproportionately to, to actually operating and running.
But is subbing it out the better way to go? Unless it's not to your uncle or nephew or something?
Yeah. Uh, the only family member I've got that's ever built a road was my grandfather who's since passed away and he did it behind a mule. So I don't think, I just, I can go on record saying we will not be using mule-drawn grade alls in precinct two when I'm a commissioner.
Well, if the precinct two subs it, are you going to be changing that and buying?
I, I think it's something you have to look at because you have to, like I said, the, the reclaim equipment, when you talk about asphalt and you talk about reclaim equipment, laid-out equipment, the dump trucks, what is the cost of ownership of all that? What is the cost of personnel for all of that? What is the cost of, of time and what are the efficiencies? Because you only have so much in your budget, so you can only lay so much asphalt. So does it warrant investing in all that? Or is it more efficient to put them onto other priorities for, for the county or for the precinct? And, and sub it out? I mean, you've got, you've got to analyze it and honestly, I can't tell you right now what that answer is. But it's something, it's an answer we got to, you have to get in, you have to dig into it and find. And we need someone that understands the true cost of ownership and the true cost of operating, uh, those types of things to, to get that real answer. Otherwise, you're, if you don't understand that, you haven't, you don't have that level of experience. You're, you're going to make a, an ill-informed decision.
Well, they, they may be cannibalizing each of the trucks to put onto the barbecue trailer, so. Okay, part of the budget.
Yeah.
What are the top three areas where the budget for this office needs to be adjusted? Your answer was the budget. The Commissioners Office needs to be prioritized based on need, the role of the County specifically. The precinct road and bridge budget should not include items not relative to road and bridge. So you only answered one and there were three. What?
Well, and, and I'm, I'm lumping in there prioritizing because I, I think that is the overarching theme there. Wasn't trying to dodge the question there, John, but we've got to prioritize what, what the precinct's job is and what the role of the Commissioners Office is, period. And whether that's two things, three things or, or ten things to do differently, it needs to come back to prioritizing that role. One of the things that you've been most outspoken on, and I think that all, I think the majority of the precincts have been derelict in, is prioritizing maintenance. And we've seen, you know, one of the things I remember you being so outspoken on in the, in the May bond is the amount of maintenance that was in, uh, that was, that was in that bond. And we need, that needs to be a priority. Because if we're just roughshod building roads and we, we're not planning to keep those maintained. If you think about it, we're, we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. It goes back to strategic planning. So we need, we've got to prioritize what the role of the precinct, of the Commissioners Office is and how they're allocating their money. And the big thing is, is getting those, getting the parks and getting the community centers, getting those out of the road and bridge budget. Now, I, I don't know if that, if they need to create a line item separate in the budget so that that's there and all of them get lumped in? Or I don't know, I don't necessarily know what the answer is. Obviously, that's something that needs to go to court, needs to be discussed in open court to figure out a solution, but it needs to stop being part of the, part of the road and bridge budget.
Are you familiar with decision analysis?
Somewhat.
And how that's applied?
Give me, give me the rundown.
Oil and gas industry, companies use it to balance out their assets. It's like an asset allocation.
Yeah.
They do it in the tree, kind of like the final four, uh, where you start off with brackets and you end up with final four teams. And they, they kind of rank and sort based on when they play. But that's, they do the same thing with oil and gas wells and fields, same thing with roads. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not, I'm not. But, I mean, it sounds like something that we, we need to look into. I mean, I, I'm not saying that I sit here with all the answers. I'm sitting here saying that I've got the drive for, to find the answers because we don't look into things like that. We don't look into ways to be more efficient. And I don't, not just in the precinct, but sitting as part of Commissioners Court as well. You, we, you know, we sit through the budget hearings and I need more people. Why are we not looking at ways to, to increase efficiency, whether it's invest in technology, whether it's invest in, in things of that nature so that we don't have to continue to add people so that we can just curb that spending increase?
Or drive around trucks to find out.
Well, what? You know, one of, one of the, here's one of the examples that I've heard in, in precinct two, specific to precinct two. A homeowners association called the Commissioners Office and said, we would like to know if we can, as an H O A, just call in and request that our ditches be cleaned, be scraped. You know what their response was? No. Every individual homeowner needs to submit a work order. So instead of one work order coming in annually saying, hey, we need this, we need this done and great. Then you efficiently, you know, dispatch somebody, you know, plan it, dispatch, you go out and just do, you know, whether it be a week or two weeks, get it knocked out. There, they, you end up with.
Make work.
Yeah, two to, two to three hundred, yeah.
Yeah, I got it. I got it.
Obviously, running, running a precinct as a commissioner is a business type thing. Give us your past business experience and, and how that qualifies you to be a county commissioner.
Okay. So the short rundown of my resume is I, I've worked for a distributor of, of engineered solutions, geosynthetics, goes into road payments and I could bore you with the tears with it. Revegetation, things of that nature. And then I went to work for manufacturers. I've worked for two different manufacturers responsible for multiple states. What I would tell you is that that responsibility came with P and L responsibility. It came with, you know, the marketing responsibility, the operations, the logistics of getting stuff in and out. And prioritizing, you know, certain things, prioritizing shipments. It was, you should have seen balls that were juggling during Hurricane Harvey because we had trucks in Montgomery, Alabama that had just left Georgia and were on their way to Texas and trying to, you know, trying to balance that and get that. So that culmination of experience, I think all of it is applicable. But also my understanding of project management. And, and I don't mean, you know, non-applicable project management. I'm talking projects very similar to the projects that the Commissioner is responsible for. Uh, and, and understanding what that process looks like, how it needs to be managed, how it, you know, what to look for, how to read the, simply how to read the plans, how to ensure that we're getting what the county's, what tax dollars are paying for. And those are, those are things that I bring to the table that, that no one else does.
Along that line, will this be financially an improvement for you or would it be a step down or about the same?
About the same. My wife asks me frequently, why, are you sure?
Because you're going to catch a lot of flak.
Yeah, exactly.
You're probably not catching that.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not catching any flak at all.
Maybe except for her.
No, no, she's, she's, she's very, I, I'm very blessed to have a very supportive wife. So hopefully this election does not get pushed because the last one, that so in, in twelve when I ran, that was when the redistricting and on our fifth anniversary, we were in the parking lot. Because the election day was May twenty-ninth and so we sit in the parking lot, working the polls for our fifth anniversary. So for our sixth anniversary, she got first row tickets, first row, second level tickets to George Drake's first final concert in San Antonio.
Yes, I'd like to explore a little bit about the leadership that you can find as a county commissioner for the drainage issues that we have. And, and my parents believe is that that's connected to the lack of subdivision regulations that the county really does have. And could you speak to that?
Yeah, I think that, I think that goes back to what I said a while ago about relationships and, and working in partnership. There, there is a hesitation to get involved in the process, in the development process from our county government. We certainly don't want to be perceived, I certainly don't want to be perceived as anti-growth or anti-developer in any way. It's, it's private property, but at the same time, I don't believe developers should be allowed to develop a property and create a burden for the taxpayers. And I'll give you two examples if you'll allow me. I got a minute. So one is where I live. I live in, my wife and I live in Jacob's Reserve off Carriage Hills. So there's that one. D R Horton built, you know, the original plot, I think, was twenty-five hundred homes and they stopped at like nineteen hundred. Carriage Hills Drive has been there for thirty, forty something years, as, as best I know. Carriage Hills Drive has been there for thirty, forty something years, as, as best I know. They also allowed for, um, there's a, on the northeast corner, there's that, uh, there's a shopping center, then there's that gas station and then they built this apartment complex. My point is, all of that was done and now do you know when, when Carriage Hills needs to be upgraded, do you know who's on the hook for it? The taxpayers of Montgomery County. And so I'm not saying that that shouldn't have been allowed to be built. I'm not saying, but that road wasn't built, you can't make the argument that that road was built to handle nineteen hundred additional homes plus a sixteen-building, three-level apartment complex. And I can tell you that that intersection was not meant to handle entrance, curb cut, curb cut, curb cut. Because you have people almost getting in wrecks and not being able to get out. It's a lack of involvement. The other one is Old Conroe Road in fourteen eighty-eight, same situation. And so instead of getting involved with the developers and saying, hey, look, we, and I don't know what the exact answer is. I don't know if it's fifty-fifty split. I don't know if it's seventy-thirty one way or the other, but I'm saying that we need to develop relationships with them to say, look, developers, the, the occupants of those commercial facilities only benefit if people can have safer and easier egress and ingress. And so it is to their benefit to work with the county and make sure that we accomplish that and not create a burden that, that we have to come back as taxpayers and fund to fix later. That's, that's how we avoid the hodgepodge of development that, that goes on and creates a, a boondoggle of issues.
You were talking about the budgetary. About the budgetary issues. When I go through the comparison of two thousand fifteen and sixteen budget to this year's budget, of course, the larger ones are, um, public safety, that was eighty-two million. And then public transportation, ninety-seven million. Those are the two largest of the current budget. You've got to be doing any sort of increasing of those budgets. The only other places it looks like it could come out of would be judicial, that's thirty-five million, uh, facilities, sixty-four million. General administration is a whopping sixty-seven million. Where would you move the money? From where to public infrastructure or public safety?
Are you putting me on the hook for public infrastructure or public safety?
Oh, if you want to move the money from those two to somewhere.
No, I, no, I, no, I think those need to be, those need to be the priority.
Right. Public infrastructure. They clearly are, is what I'm saying, so.
They, they are by the law, but are, but are they keeping up with, with the need? And if you look at, if you look at everyone and, um, and I forget who it was and they're gonna crucify me if they see this, but I believe it was Constable Gable's office that ran the, the crime statistics at one of the events that they did for just south of Montgomery County. And if you look at those crime statistics versus the crime statistics in Montgomery County, it's, it's frightening. And every law enforcement professional that I've talked to has said it is easier, it is easier to keep the element out than to try and remove the element once it, once it has embedded itself. And if you read the headlines, we sense, we must make that a priority to make sure that we are keeping up with the needs in that regard. Public infrastructure, we know we're not keeping up with that. We just had that conversation a second ago that we're not even covering our own maintenance on our current roads while needing to build and needing and wanting to build new roads. What we've got to do is if we prioritize those two in the spending process while also making taxpayer relief a priority, because we can't continue to put the burden on their backs in increasing those tax dollars, then it will force us to dig into the general, you know, general administration and look at where we can increase efficiencies. We, everybody needs to, needs to be led, going, going back to that leadership word and say, look, what, what are we doing? The answer is not always add people. It's two thousand seventeen fixing to be two thousand eighteen. We need to be looking at ways to decrease the size of government while increasing the efficiencies. And it needs to be a concerted effort. And the only way you're gonna do it is, Dale, you touched on it, is management by being seen, by walking and getting involved. That, James, did that answer?
Well, a little more details.
Okay.
I understand.
Sorry, I was trying to get to all of it.
See, here's one that I have to admit, I don't have a good grasp on. So I may be asking a question that is, uh, non-optimal, but.
Okay.
Contracting out versus in-house, Montgomery County employees versus contracts. It's quite often touted that contracting out saves money. Uh, are there opportunities that you see for doing that, for contracting out things that are currently being done by county employees?
I think that you, I, I think we would be remiss if we did not consider that. I, I.
More than consider it. Are, are there certain areas?
Are there certain, absolutely, but I'm saying that we should consider that at every opportunity. Because if there's a way to more efficiently do something, we, we've got to seize on that. That's the only way we're going to cut, keep a, a high level of customer service and a high level of providing services if we increase efficiencies. So to do that, we, we may need to look at private sector where it makes sense to, to do that.
Such as road maintenance, such as cleaning out ditches. And I don't know who's, how those are being done right now. That's where my.
Well, okay, I see what you, I see what you're saying. I see where you're going. Um.
I love cheap immigrant labor.
I, I'm gonna go with no, James. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna err on the side of no. I, I think that we, we've got to look at all of it, Dale. I think that, um, we've got to maintain responsiveness to, to our community. We've got to remain responsiveness to, to the precinct and make sure we can. But at the same time, we've got to do things more leaner. And if we can rely on the private sector to do that, because private sector is able to not be completely, if we hire somebody, if the county hires somebody, they're dedicated to that job three hundred sixty-five days a year. It may not be warranted three hundred sixty-five days a year, whereas if you employ the private sector through contract basis, they, they can come in and go as, as needed.
One of my pet peeves for the last few months has been the fact that the county gave that tax exemption and it excludes senior citizens. So twenty percent of Montgomery County don't get that exemption. And I've talked to people in the county, I've talked to people in the legislature. It's gonna take a combined effort of legislative people and county people to fix that little issue. So, how should the court address that? Should the commissioner be in Austin one day a week? Or do you have somebody that's dedicated to staying on top of that? Or do you just wait for somebody to come prior? And do you have people in mind that you're gonna use in those positions?
Use in what position?
Those positions of being liaison between the Commissioner's Court and the legislature.
Dennis is looking for a job.
I, I, I think that that is, I, I think that's the job of the commissioner. I mean, I, no, I don't, I don't think.
You would spend time in Austin?
I, I think it's paramount. I mean, I think that you, you've got to, I mean, obviously makes sense. I mean, you can't, I mean, I'm not gonna post up there for three months or anything of that nature. But I do think it is as an elected official of Montgomery County, as, as someone elected to represent the interest of the people, in this case, of precinct two, that if there's something, I'm thinking appraisal caps, spending caps, you know, things of that nature. This issue that needs to be fixed that I know is gonna take, you know, legislative action to fix, it is imperative that we have someone willing to go and make that case and go and, and develop those relationships, have those relationships with our state reps and our state senators that can push that, whether get it done through a local bill as necessary for that or, you know, get it done through, get it pushed through the legislation. Who better, who's, who better than a, than a city and county commissioner to go and make that case for the betterment of our county?
Well, that'd probably be a good person. Do you have any idea whether the current commissioners ever go to Austin?
I know some do. I know some do not.
I would expect that most do not.
So. I've never seen him there. I've never heard of anyone that has.
I hesitate there.
I, well, I take that back. I, I was told once twice that he was there. Not just toll road, but. County, yeah, was it, uh, Association of Counties?
Oh, okay, okay. All right, uh, we've wrapped up. Uh, if you want, you can close with a four-minute closing or I've, I've got one or two more questions. Okay, so you talked about, the question was in regard.
Our reserve minute.
Certificate of Obligation Bonds. And when is a certificate of obligation warranted? You said you'd vote against the COs except for an emergency. What would you consider an emergency and what that warrants a CO?
Man, what, what, what's your threshold, what's your litmus test? We, my litmus test is we gotta have it and there's no other way to fund it. You know, whether it be, you know, we just went through Harvey and there was massive devastation and we needed to do something right now. May, maybe that's, maybe that's something we need to, maybe it's some, uh, an option we need to consider. You know, reimbursement funding or things that, you know, maybe stalled or something of that nature. We, we need to look at that. Anything that should fall under long-term planning, to me, is out. Because that, that's on the backs of the Commissioner and the Commissioner's Court to, to be involved in the strategic planning, whether it be jails, whether it be buildings, things of that nature. Those, to me, don't qualify as an emergency. Those qualify as poor planning if, if that's the option that we're looking at.
So what if the toll road is built and it's not being generated with revenue and all of a sudden, man, we gotta have this Woodlands Parkway extension to help generate the revenue for the toll road?
That's not an emergency, John. That, what that is, that is a, that's poor planning. That's, that is poor execution. That, that is everything wrong with, with the process and with the direction we're going. So the.
So further to that, okay, when you get further north and maybe into Grimes County, I think it's gonna be a toll road with no service routes or.
No, that's in Montgomery County.
That's in Montgomery County, right. And so, wow, all of a sudden we need to build these service routes. We forgot about that.
We, we didn't forget about it. It's been, so we've got two options. We can put it on a ballot and make the case to the voters of Montgomery County. If, if, you know, if they want it, then great, then they can go do it. Or I'll tell you what, it's a novel idea. The people that are gonna be crying for it, the people that want to develop that area, they can build it.
How are they gonna do that? How would they do that?
I mean, what do you mean, how would they do that?
Uh, the people that live in that area.
Not, I'm not, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about the people that live in that area. I'm, what I'm saying is, is that most likely, if, if there's a, if there's a clamoring to have the, the, those access roads built or those speeder roads built, it's gonna be from large track owners that want to commercially develop the area.
Right.
Not, I, I seriously doubt it's gonna be from local homeowners. If, if it's, if it's that.
Those are the, that are commuting that don't want to pay the toll.
It, it, it could be, but I'm saying that I think the loudest voice would come from the commercial developers that are wanting it. And I'm, and I'm saying that, you know, they could certainly build it. Obviously, you're right, it doesn't make sense that a homeowner would be able to build it. So, but COs is an important thing. I'm glad you brought that question up because if you go back to everything, again, James, you asked earlier about, you know, how people will know how I'm gonna vote. This is something that I have been very consistent on going back to two thousand eleven that we overuse COs. And both of my opponents have shown a propensity for using COs for, for, for situations to dig themselves out of poor planning situations or for non-emergencies.
Well, I'll add that issue real quickly because this hasn't come up before. When you say your opponents, we know Riley is the incumbent. You're referring to Greg Parker as, his COs as what position?
As county commissioner.
Of?
Of Cornwall County. He voted, he voted, he voted to issue nearly forty million dollars to build a justice center. And he was overturned by the people of Cornwall County by petition. But he voted, he's on record as voting to issue that debt to circumvent the voters and issue that debt.
Okay, thanks.
And what was it, forty million?
Yeah, I think, if I remember correctly, it was just shot forty million.
For a.
Uh, they call it a justice center.
And you can supply the documentation to John.
Be happy, I can.
Okay, um, all right, so we'll wrap it up here. We've gone at least an hour, I think, or right on. So we appreciate you coming in.
Absolutely.
Good luck in your campaign.
I appreciate y'all having me.